We'll enter a motion to adjourn the study session. There is my motion.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Avila. Any objections? Seeing none, so move. Alright, so at this point, I'd like to open up the Baldwin Park City Council Special Meeting. Today is February the 6th, 2019, and the time is 7:25. So, at this point, we're gonna go ahead and go into a roll call.
Regular meeting, ma'am.
What's that?
I'm following the agenda, but okay, that's fine.
Let's do that. Alright, so at this point, I'm not certain if Pastor, yeah Pastor Jackson is here, and Pastor Flores, if they want to come up and lead us in an invocation, followed by the flag salute? Okay. I will bring... Alright, so at this point, I will ask all those that are able to stand, please do so. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here tonight. As we pray, just wanna just pray for some families who have lost loved ones recently. We've had some in our own congregation as well. Mr. Jose Paez, a graduate servista, age of forty-six or forty-seven, I believe, so... But I know there's other families as well, too, so... So let's just unite as a city. Let's pray. Gracious God, we thank you. This is gracias señor por esta noche señor y la comunidad de Baldwin Park, la familias de Baldwin Park. We thank you, Lord, for the community, for the family. We thank you, Lord, for our mayor, our council. We thank you for all those who serve in our public offices and in public works. We thank you for our police department, Lord. Lord, in times where we experience loss and tragedy, we're reminded of the main things, Lord, and help us to keep the main things the main things. Lord, we just pray for your guidance over our council, and we just pray, Lord, that you bring a peace to the city, and with that peace, with that shalom, would be prosperity and health, Lord. We commit this to you, Lord. Gracias señor por este privilegio señor y para experiencia de paz.
Heavenly Father, we just come before you right now in the name of the Lord, giving you praise, glory, and honor, and thanksgiving, Lord. Pastor Paul and I represent unity, Lord God, tearing down the walls of racial prejudice ness, Lord, uniting our city together, Lord God, the city workers, Lord God, the city council, the police department, and all those that are working to make this city a great city, Lord. Wisdom and knowledge and understanding, Lord, to give to them, Lord. Touch the business district, Lord God, that they may prosper, Lord God, as well, Father God. We need you in our schools, Lord God. We need it anointing upon our children, Lord God, that our children, Lord God, will grow up, Lord God, gang-free, dope-free, Father God. And the families, Lord God. It starts right there at the home front, Lord God, with the children, that the parents who will unite themselves with the children, and children with their parents, Lord. We are asking these things, Lord God, in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. At this point, we'll face the flag. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a degree of justice for all. Alrighty. Thank you. Thank you very much for everyone being here. At this point, I'm gonna go ahead and ask that City Treasurer will go over to roll call.
Good evening, everyone. Buenas noches a todos y bienvenidos. Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Present.
Councilmember Alejandro Avila.
Present.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
He had an emergency, so I'm gonna go ahead and move a motion to... Excuse him. So that's my motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Avila. Any objections? Seeing none, so move. Alright, thank you.
Vice Mayor Monica Garcia.
Yeah.
Mayor Manuel Lozano.
Present. Alright, thank you. Thank you very much, City Treasurer Maria Contreras. Ready? So, at this point... Alright, so at this point, we're gonna go ahead over to the... Let me see. I think I have a... Okay, where's the presentations? I think I have this. One moment. Here we go. Alright, so at this point, we're going over to the presentation for Measure H funding, a presentation by Recreation and Community Services, so...
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I just wanna thank Mani Carrillo de Coon, of course, Los Angeles County, because Measure H, of course, we all know, was voted by Californians to be able to address the homeless situation throughout California. Of course, we all went out on a late count, but was that a week ago, Manny, or two weeks ago?
Yes, two weeks ago.
Yes, Councilmember Alejandro and I were there, and of course, representing all the council members, so I think this is going to be an excellent presentation, so that people are aware. And I wanna make sure that we feature this in the actual newsletter as well, Manny.
Yes, sir.
On the front page. Alright, thank you.
Yes.
Oh, yes, that's right. I forgot. Councilmember Hernandez was there, that's right. Also Shannon, that's right.
Yes, Mayor.
We were all out there late at night, counting.
Yeah, we had numerous council members as well as executive team members, so thank you very much to the community for assisting in the complete count. At this point, I have Eurico Ruiz Esparza, who is our lead for the city of Baldwin Park in regards to Measure H. At the request of Councilmember Alejandro Avila, we will provide the council an update, and also some good news. We received some positive information in regards to two grants that Eurico will give an update in regards to. Eurico?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Like Manny mentioned, my name is Eurico Ruiz Esparza with the Department of Recreation and Community Services, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the entire Baldwin Park Homeless Action Team. Susie Ruelas with our housing manager, who is here assisting us with the efforts, as well as our series of public work members, including Ron and Sam and the rest of his team, police department as well, and our social services team. So, we thank you for the opportunity to provide you an update and an overall overview of Measure H and the efforts here locally and across the region.
Over.
So, our presentation tonight will begin with a brief overview of Measure H, and also the purpose of our local homeless plan. So as you may recall, in an effort to address the impact of homelessness on individuals and communities countywide, in 2007, voters approved Measure H to fund services and to combat those issues that arise as a result of that. And in June of 2017, funding allocations were actually available for cities to... Approved by the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors for planning grants, and the city of Baldwin Park competed and was successfully a recipient of a $50,000 planning-only grant. There was no service funding provided at that time. Additional Measure H backgrounds, we wanted to just thank you, the entire city council, for always being an ally in our efforts to combat homeless locally. The city of Baldwin Park has been an active partner and a participant of Measure H since its inception, with the passage of several resolutions in support and partnership opportunities with the implementation of the tax back in 2016. So, some of the biggest concept with the Measure H funding is that it funds 47 strategies across LA County, and it's inclusive of $3.5 billion across this funding source. However, these are areas that are addressed in the 47 strategies, of which only 13 of them are eligible for city participation. So you see at the end, at the local level, we are somewhat restricted on the roles and our capacities to combat these issues without first setting those foundations. So, as the successful recipients of the $50,000 planning grant, we were able to hold a series of stakeholder input meetings that really drafted our Baldwin Park homeless plan, which is very inclusive, it was very transparent, there was a lot of communication that went into this plan. So you can see here a recap of all of our community stakeholder input sessions that basically took place from March to May of last year, and we really had included literally everyone in the community. We had our city council members, our executive city staff and departments that were directly or indirectly impacted by homelessness. We had representatives from the Baldwin Park Unified School District, as well as the Baldwin Park City Library, faith-based organizations, and business owners, as well as residents. So we had a very holistic approach in our efforts to draft a plan that would make sense at the local level. Next, you will see in your packets that you have the entire homeless plan, which is, you know, pretty lengthy, but I drafted an executive summary highlighting the key points that really start with giving you a background and purpose of the homeless plan. It gives us an overall idea of how homelessness is being addressed at the countywide, and then it goes into specific goals that were drafted from the input meetings that we had, which came out to five local goals. And a series of appendices includes stakeholder input summaries, so you can identify what areas were of concern by certain groups and different stakeholders, as well as identifying those strategies that make sense for us at the local level. In addition to that, there is a city cost analysis that might be really important for us to consider in our efforts to implement. It is a very costly effort, but we are confident that working at it together with not just the city, but also our neighbor cities, our COG and our county, will give us promising So at the local level, the primary goals and strategies that were adopted from the plan were to explore the contributions that address the crisis of homelessness in Baldwin Park, and see how those align with our jurisdictions at the regional level. So, number one, we looked at coordinated local efforts to respond to homelessness. That meant getting a team together of our key city staff and our different stakeholders. Goal number two was to help prevent individuals and families from becoming homelessness. So a lot of the preventative issues with housing, social services, really took the forefront at this step. Goal number three was to connect case management and services to the coordinated entry system. And what the coordinated entry system does is a system-wide software that connects those experiencing homelessness or are at risk of becoming homeless to go through this one agency, one effort, so that there is no local preference, there is no room for differences in who gets served. Everyone must go through there and get an assessment of their acuity score, and then get linkage to those services. For our fourth goal, it was to expand access to workforce development programs and to increase employment, and we're happy to report that last year during our job fair, it was the first annual homeless initiative job fair also that allowed 1,000 jobs to community members who are either experiencing homelessness or community members who wanted to address homelessness. So we're very well into those efforts. Our goal number five, which is primarily the most funded goal in the series that you'll see next, is the exploration of opportunities to increase the number of units of affordable and supportive housing. So we will see that in our efforts to implement these plans, the Board of Supervisors, at the end of last year, approved $9 million available for cities across the LA County to receive funding to implement their plans, either partial or fully, and after a very competitive process, we were one of the only cities to receive funding in two areas. So Baldwin Park was a recipient at the micro level with Priority Area 1, which is partially funded in the amount of $169, and this is for us to develop a land use study and convening study that will be spearheaded by the Community Development Department. And $344,054 is still eligible for resubmital. Although we were not funded the entire grant, there is an opportunity to resubmit. We're also very excited to report that our efforts are not just within the city of Baldwin Park. We are partnering with our neighboring cities that have similar demographics that will include the city of Almonte and Almonte, that we were also partially funded in those efforts in the amount of $85,000 awarded for an assessment, and also property and capital improvements to homes that share these specific housing priorities. So we were really excited for that. And there is another pot of $789,000 that we will be eligible to resubmit after working with the county to receive areas in motel vouchers, rapid rehousing, and safe parking. Under Priority Area 2, at the macro level, once again with the partnership with the other cities, we were able to partially receive funding in the amount of $113,000, which will be awarded for housing navigators and housing coordinators. And I cannot express how grateful we are for this opportunity, because as you may know, our capacity building is very stretched. We have the expertise of a housing authority, however, we don't have as many staff that have traditionally dealt with homeless issues in our community. So this will allow the tri-city model to really focus in on those landlord incentive programs, those workshops, and a variety of other housing coordinator and navigator issues to help supplement those permanent and temporary supportive housings. And one of the areas that wasn't funded and will not be eligible for resubital is the training aspect. And the reason why all cities got denied is because training will be coordinated centrally through the county office, so they will be directing staff to those specific training that will be inclusive of all ADA cities. And I do wanna draw some attention to the funding outcomes. Although we were very, very prepared and fortunate to receive this micro and macro level funding, there is still concern across the spa level and across the San Gabriel Valley to ensure that the funding that was set aside by the County Board of Supervisors gets to the city level. So we will be working closely with the COG, as well as the county officials, to ensure that we receive the allocations that was set aside for the cities in these implementation grants. So we will be closely working with them to refine and resubmit our additional areas that were not funded. However, it is something very strategic that the county is engaging in, in ensuring that we have a platform in order to successfully move on to the additional services. And lastly, we do wanna draw the attention to additional opportunities that will be coming down the pipeline as well with heap funding. Heap funding is coordinated by the LASSA and its own COC, which was a grant that... Another grant that was released back in December of 2018. And as a result of our positive standing with the... We are eligible to apply for the heap funding due to our readiness in approving the resolution to declare the city as an emergency shelter crisis, which was approved by you, the city council, back in October of 2017. So thank you for that. And in addition to that, our completion of our Baldwin Park homeless plan, which is also another requirement that needed to be completed in these efforts, in order to be eligible for this funding. So, in red, I have two of the funding opportunities that may possess some challenges with our cities. Really, they are designed for that of a service provider, someone who is already really established in the fight against homelessness, including access to facilities that are already in place. And also, it possesses some challenges because of the prioritization that they're given these two areas for serving those with higher acuity scores, which means that these persons may be the most chronically ill homeless individuals, and something that might be a challenge for us to serve at this time. However, there is an additional funding opportunity in the next cycle that will be available, and we are hoping that with the foundation of our planning grant and our study, we will be able to foresee our approval or our application in the future. In green, you see the access center and the access points, which really align with our efforts at the local level of where we fit in this big equation. So, as far as an access center, that is a place where community members, those that are experiencing homelessness or are at risk, can come in and receive wraparound supportive services. There is already interest with the cities of Duarte, Irwindale, Azusa, and Morovia to host a access center. So, with your direction, we hope that we can become a partner in those efforts and apply for an access center, if that is your wish. In addition to that, an access point, which is more a local-level access point, they're looking at the city of Baldwin Park to serve as a direct access point. And there, we do have the flexibility to dictate whether we want families, which is our primary, one of our primary targets, families or seniors, for example, those that may not be of the highest acuity. So the access points in Baldwin Park might align with our efforts at this time and point if... And it is up to your discretion today if we wanna go towards those efforts. There's an additional opportunity with the SGV COG with the Regional Housing Trust Fund that also looks at opportunities to look at this approach from a regional trust fund effort, and that is to increase supportive and affordable housing. That is still in the works, that is still information that is being developed as we stand here today, so we hope that when the information becomes available, we will be able to provide that to you. So, next steps, we will be looking at our homeless plan implementation grant at the micro and macro level to ensure that we are complying with all of those elements, refine and resubmit grants for the areas of reconsideration, and we will also be drafting a plan with your guidance for the LASSAS RFP, which our recommendation would be to consider the access points and access center, and we're open to hear feedback in the other two areas. Community quarterly, and also, we are engaging in individual and quarterly meeting sessions that will provide this information back to our community and our stakeholders, one of which is coming up with the Baldwin Park Business Association in the month of March. So we will be circling back with our stakeholders and letting them know our progress, and we will continue to provide you, the city council, with reviews and updates as our progress are made. Thank you, and is there any questions?
Yes, I have a question. Are we... Could you mention for the public the grant, the amount of grants that we got, the total?
Correct. So...
I know you passed them, so it is.
In Priority Area 1, we got a total of $169,200, and that is to fund a land use study.
Awesome. That's great.
At the macro level, with the other two cities, we have $85,000 awarded for also land use studies across the three cities, and capital improvement projects for homes that are currently being used for permanent supportive housing or transitional housing to increase the home supplies of those. And under Priority Area 2, we got partially funded for $113,000, which will award us a housing navigator and housing coordinators across the three cities.
Now, out of curiosity, so has... I know that we're going in this with South Almonte and Almonte for some type of potential housing in this. Have they also received any particular type of grants?
They... At the macro level, it's the same grant that was submitted collaboratively, but they do have a big effort in their veteran homeless housing, which South Almonte has demonstrated that it can be done. And we look to them for, you know, their expertise, and they're a little bit ahead of us with several facilities that are already existing in Almonte with very much success stories around those buildings.
Oh, excellent.
You did use it a veteran.
Oh, did you? And how was that?
In Almonte.
Very nice. Okay.
Yes, very high-quality, very productive sets of wraparound support services right there within their building.
Oh, that's great. Okay, Councilmember Monica, I gotta see ya.
Yes. So Yuri, I just wanna understand that the nearly $170,000 is going towards a land use study?
There's one land use study, yes, for here, for the city of Baldwin Park, and there's an additional one that will happen with the three cities. And if there's recommendations to contact, we do have an upcoming meeting with the county to see how else... They're not very flexible with the spending of those areas, but we can ask if there's recommendations for additional services.
Okay. And then, $85,000 was awarded to three cities, and that's for assessment of land property and capital improvements. So we would assess those three cities to see what properties could potentially be used for housing. Is that what I understood?
That is correct.
Okay. $85,000, that's a very small amount, huh?
It is, and it is something that the COG and all of the cities... As a matter of fact, today, with our city manager Shannon attended one of our... One of the city managers' meetings, and it is something that the cities are seriously looking at, and looking at the disparity in funding outcomes with this, because it is very, very low and concerning.
And then, I'm seeing that $113,000 was awarded for housing navigators and housing coordinators. So what does that look like tangibly for our city?
So for us, there's a series of focus areas that these staff will do, which is inclusive of making those collaborations with landlords, maybe identifying new housing units that could be potentially used for homeless housing, the outreach element, the case connections, the prevention. Susie, and I can refer to Susie if there's any additional areas that might work for that.
Does it look like it will be one additional staff member who will help coordinate this type of activity, or is it going to be supplementing existing staff?
Unfortunately, it's not a supplementation. All of these efforts will be new efforts.
Okay.
So the county made it very specific that we would not be able to supplement current staff, as these efforts specifically have to deal with homeless individuals or those that are at risk. In addition to that, we're looking at our target with this, it's a collaboration with the school district, of how our housing navigators can prevent homelessness of students, families, to encourage that connectivity, to navigate through the systems, or to apply to the coordinated entry system, which is ultimately the only pathway into bridge housing temporary or supportive housing after.
And since there are three cities involved, who is actually hiring this new staff?
We will be meeting with the county. This is the news that we just received, so they haven't provided the guidelines, but they did hint at the fact that it would be somewhat of a temporary worker or a contractor that will come in to navigate across the three cities.
So, and then my last question is, so these are all wonderful, you know, it's great to see that we're being provided resources so that we can plan, and like you said, kinda set that platform that we can launch from. But since you've been very involved in these conversations with the county, with the COG, on behalf of the city and with surrounding cities, are there funds that are going and enhancing existing services that is actually trickling down to the individuals who are in need?
There is. The 47 strategies really address different areas. However, we do see a disparity in the connectivity to those services in our spa, Spa 3. And therefore, the COG and cities in Spa 3, including ours, have taken the leadership role and really have advocated for those services to make it out of central Los Angeles or south LA, that we are getting these services rendered way over on this side to the San Gabriel Valley. So there are efforts being made, however, they could be improved, and that is something that the San Gabriel Valley, COG, and all of the cities involved in these local efforts are really pushing for.
Well, that's good. Now, I'm... Well, that's good. Now, I'm glad to hear that we're trying to get more resources, of course. And I hope that through the monies that became available, that, you know, the actual homeless individuals are being the recipients of those funds.
Yes. And it is a great thing that the county really has a restrictive structure around what it can be used for. So we will be looking to their guidance to implement these funding sources and ensure that, like you said, the foundation is being set as well as to potentially reengage with the county so that we can resubmit successful proposals. And some of those, if we really look at them, include core services such as storage containers for our PD. That was very instrumental in our efforts. However, it wasn't funded in the first round. So we will be challenging the county and really advocating for those even shorter-term solutions to ensure that they provide that support or connect us with someone who can. In addition to motel vouchers, I know it may seem very short-term, and it is. However, sometimes in order for cities to build those relationships, to connect individuals who are very vulnerable sometimes to long-term solutions, takes that motel voucher for those three or five days. So we will be advocating for those efforts as well as our safe parking program that really will look at those shorter-term solutions, which at this point weren't funded, but we will be advocating for those as well.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions? If not, thank you very much for the presentation. And we could work on placing it in the following edition for the newsletter upfront.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent job.
Thank you. That was a great presentation.
Thank you. All right. So at this point, go ahead and, we don't have anything else to report.
Mayor, just really quickly, I'd like to report that I attended the Independent Cities Association Conference over the weekend. And there were really great sessions, as always, a great opportunity to connect with the regional elected officials as well and hear how they're tackling some of the same challenges that we might be facing, including the cannabis regulation and also emergency mitigation, preparedness, things like that. I know that the mayor was there, councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, and councilmember Paul Hernandez as well. So we all, you know, were part of that conference. And I think it was, it's always, it's a beautiful, you know, beautiful location, but it's always very good to connect with people in the region and hear how they're tackling some of the same issues.
Yes. I agree. It was definitely educational. I think, and I guess I mentioned at the end, because I know that Mr. Paul Hernandez has experienced in the emergency preparedness, the presentation was there was very interesting as well. And for some odd reason, I didn't get to see Mike Toohey, the former mayor of the city of West Covina out there. Usually he's there all over the place.
Yes. And since you recognize the former councilman of West Covina, I'd also like to recognize that we have three electeds, well, two electeds, one appointed. And we want to congratulate the newly-appointed board member to the Valley County Water District, Javier Vargas. So if you want to stand, congratulations. And then we have Margarita Vargas, who is also longstanding with the Valley County Water District.
Vice President.
Vice President. Do you want to do the honors for David Muse?
All right.
You're honor roll.
And then, of course, the Honorable David Muse is here with us as well. So just wanted to acknowledge them as well.
All right. So at this point, I'll go ahead and continue on with the acknowledgement. Also, former councilmember of City of Baldwin Park, Ms. Terry Muse. Thank you very much. Also Waste Management Representative. Oh, David. Oh, yes. And also, before I forget, Mr. David Vella for LA Community. Thank you, Dave, for being here today. And then also, we have one of our colleagues, the Honorable, the former distinguished, still distinguished, of course, Marlene Garcia, who served here for many, many years, was on the fourth one of the teen center. And of course, she became a grandmother. Is it about a year ago? Almost. She became a grandmother. Okay. Congratulations. She's still out there running 5K. So, yes, and thank you very much. And by the way, before I forget, besides being a grandmother, her daughter, Delilah, that went through all the Ballpark School, just became, was accepted at UCLA and has her bachelor's and has become an RN as well at UCLA. All right. Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yes.
I also want to inform you, I attended the League of Cities this last week also for new mayors and councilmembers. It was quite interesting, because as you know, I'm a new councilmember. A lot of good information, a lot to learn. I learned there's a lot to learn, but it was very exciting to be there. I met a lot of people from the surrounding cities, people dealing with the homelessness problems. So there's a lot of people that we can connect to for questions and things that we can do also.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Avila, for your report as well. All right. So before I go on, I want to also close on behalf of a good friend, Armando Torres, born 1959 and passed away this January of 2019. You know, services are on Friday. Very well-known and respected former football player, I believe he was as well, at Ballpark High School. And the family's been in Ballpark probably, I believe, over 60 years. So it's a very renowned family. Our deepest condolences goes out to this individual that I had an opportunity to meet. A big fan of UCLA and LA Rams as well. All right. So at this point, nothing else to report. So I will go ahead and open up the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak, you have approximately three minutes. Thank you. Good evening.
Congratulations, new councilmember, council. My name's Eduardo Salzada, 3600 Vanwig. The lady right here brings up a lot of points, but evidently it's not enough cash flow. I gave her my card. I'm going to give her some ideas. How to, I know pennies on the dollar. There's ways to do it, trailers, making sure it's public land. It's available to you guys. Making sure that we get these trailers that a company that did liquidate a lot of trailers in Fontana, it was a company called GE, and they put trailers on for our construction companies. As you guys know, the union wants to support all the cities. We're advocating a CUP program. So the CUP program is volunteering. Now, just to go on her topic, the CUP program, we got to volunteer. We got to put in so many hours, volunteer for the city. That's the Southwest Carpenters. If you guys are not aware, you're welcome to the training center in Whittier. I'm going to make sure someone gets Ted Heeman as his number, just like her. But my idea is also for the city to help out, because I did grow up in El Monte, 11508 Pointcera. Then we moved to, it was 12508, actually, Pointcera. We moved to Michael Hunt Drive. And now I'm here in your city by luck, and then she's here. And it's something that moves me. A lot of people are mentally ill. They can't get off the drug dependency. The county of LA don't know what to do with them. They get stuck, you know, they get thrown out in the streets. Evidently, it sounds like we need to build some kind of church. We did have pastors here. You know, there's a lot of solutions, but we got to have a group thinking on how to do it. You guys are the leaders. I'm just the voice. Like I said, 3600 Vanwig, I'm available to you. She has my card. I want to talk to the chief of police about other issues. So I'm going to give him my card so I could do a confidential meeting with him, and then he could bring it out to you guys. I don't want to blow a whistle, but there is issues on that street. About six months ago, there was a speeding vehicle, and it hit evidently a LA County Sheriff. I taped it on my Facebook. We had 14, 15 sheriffs come, helicopter flew over for about two hours. The county of LA took care of it. Baldwin Park never came. I have it on video. This kid, he's still around the neighborhood. He goes up and down. That's another topic that I'll talk to the chief of police. But I do want to say thank you guys all for doing what you do. I mean, everybody don't have the answers. Evidently, they point fingers when you do try to do the right thing, and it's not the right thing, and then you get people, like they say, the pros and cons. Just do what your heart says. And my time's up.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, sir. Moving on with public communication.
Hello, city council, Baldwin Park residents. There's a gentleman on Baldwin Park Boulevard. If you're crossing over going southbound on Baldwin Park Boulevard, on ramp to the 210 going west, this gentleman's a very hunchbacked person. And he shows up over there all the time, walking out between cars, crossing on red lights. I've seen the police over there, but I've never seen them escort this person out of there. Someday, may not happen, somebody's going to hit him. And then what? Those people are going to sue that poor driver. So I think this city needs to make a better effort on that corner. I know you park across the Mexican restaurant. Don't park there. Park out in front where they can see you. Park next to them. I don't care where you park. Get out there and quit this person from walking around. Someday, unfortunately, sooner or later, somebody's going to hit him. Thank you. Also, you ask us in this paperwork, Mayor, turn off our beepers, turn off our phones, sell your phones. You guys, none of you turn yours off, do you? Nope. Mayor, in fact, you were typing to somebody while this gentleman was up here talking, so you're not paying attention. Also, chewing gum, peanuts, or whatever you people are chewing on, doesn't look very good. I know you don't look at it that way, but it doesn't. Everybody out here, including me, we can see you guys go munching and munchy, munchy, munchy. That doesn't look very good. As far as this program H, oh, this is really a good one. You people, including me, had to pay millions of dollars for this home for the people that need a home. This lady put up there on, I should have memorized, possible tax increase. You're getting millions and millions of dollars. I'll tell you what's wrong with the whole system. Too much of this baloney up here and not enough effect to the people that need it. They don't need it 20 years down the road. They need it now. So what are we waiting for? Get rid of all this jumbo rumble that you got up here and just start processing this so these people do not have to be hanging in the street, sleeping on the sidewalk, or sleeping anywhere they can find somewhere to sleep. Thank you very much. Oh, wait a minute. I got 18 seconds. Can't let that get past me. Also, Mayor, the Treasury over here, assessments. Don't forget, you want to raise your taxes? Don't call it tax anymore. Call it an assessment. That way, nobody knows what it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Eric Pena, and I'm a resident here in the city, great city of Baldwin Park. Last meeting, there was a presentation about the implementation as well as the success of the Waste Management Bulk Pickup Program. And quite frankly, it's something that we all take for granted here. It's, you know, I think we have spring cleaning at the end of December. It's something that, you know, we try to take advantage of, just actually just taking out the trash. But when we have a bulky item that doesn't fit in our trash bin, obviously, it's something that we, you know, just say, hmm, what am I going to do? So we either have two choices. We, one, we actually call somebody and pick it up. Obviously, it's going to cost an arm or a leg. Or two, we actually just put it up on our street. Obviously, it's not well for the beautification of the city of Baldwin Park. But fortunately, we actually have the opportunity to actually either use our Waste Management app or actually call to actually pick it up for free. So again, I think that's something that we take for granted. And I think I'd just like to just say thank you for the opportunity for us not actually at Waste Management and City of Baldwin Park that we actually don't have to pay for bulk pickup. And a special shout out to Terry Muse, just making sure that it's obviously some part of either our taxes or as far as our service. But once again, it's just something that's actually really, really great use of our services here. And again, it's something that I will be forever fortunate as I, myself, resident, have always taken advantage of. So thank you for, at least to the decision-makers here at this chamber. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your words as well. Terry Muse, wow. Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. And by the way, she is a resident of Baldwin Park, so she has a vested interest as well. Thank you. Thank you.
John Rios, resident. And I'm going to need a translator, please.
Sure. Absolutely. Thank you, Ludus, our deputy city clerk. Thank you.
One of the things I've been noticing, go talk in Spanish. Or you want me to talk in Spanish? Okay. I'll talk in Spanish. Muchas de las cosas que están pasando en la ciudad es que no lo ponemos atención como residentes.
A lot of the things that are happening in the city of Baldwin Park is that we're not paying attention as residents.
Como la señorita está diciendo que homeless aquí en la ciudad de Baldwin Park, sí hay mucha gente que está homeless. Muchas veces yo me pongo enfrente de mi yarda, hago hot dogs y esto los miro, los invito y que vengan a comer.
Like Uriko mentioned about the homelessness issues, a lot of the times I myself cook and invite people who don't have food to join me.
Tengo los árboles de naranjas, a ellos se los doy. Porque muchas veces uno tiene nada de comer ni nada. Y muchas veces llegan y me preguntan.
I have two fruit trees, oranges specifically, and I give them out to the homeless because they ask me to.
Y esa es una cosa que como la comunidad necesita dar la mano a la gente esa, okay?
And as a community, we need to help each other.
En el parque Barnes, hay mucha gente allá que está homeless también. Se esconden al otro lado del cerco y yo le he reportado a Manny también le he dicho y todo.
There's a lot of homeless in Barnes Park, and they hide over the fence, and he has reported it to staff and to council.
Manny le dije una vez que pusiera el techo del edificio allí que los que estuvieran arriba del destre. Y Manny fue para allá y miró y pusieron eso. Eso se lo agradecemos mucho.
He requested that a roof be placed, and staff was able to do that for the homelessness.
Lo que pasa es que tienen las cosas de electricidad y agarran y ponen y se dan su haircut y todo allí y se mira muy mal muchas veces. Cuando hay chamacos, chamaquillas, ellos están allá haciéndose el beautiful, que se dice.
In the park.
The homeless utilize the outlets? Thank you. To beautify themselves, to get their hairs, and use curling irons.
Y esa es una de las cosas que la policía ha estado muy atenté de ir y hablar con la gente que está allí. Muchos son drogadictos y todo, pero eso no es el punto. El punto es que la policía sí va para allá y se ha calmado mucho.
It does say that the Baldwin Park Police Department has been present, that there is substance abuse, but they've had a handle on it.
Una de las cosas, y esto va a ser para Manny, que en el fin de semana están teniendo torneos de soccer league y todo del sábado y el domingo. Y hay muchos accidentes allí que la gente no se puede parcar y están reclamando la gente de allí.
There's been a lot of incidents with parking during tournaments on the weekends, and that's an issue that needs to be addressed.
La gente de Barnes me dijeron que les dijera a ustedes qué es lo que tienen que hacer para agarrar preferred parking.
The community members around Barnes Park asked him to ask council what they have to do to issued permit parking around that area.
Y esa es una de las cosas que estoy ayudándole a la comunidad allá y también a la policía y a la ciudad de Baldwin Park.
He says he's acting as He says he's acting as a liaison to assist the residents on speaking with council and with Ballon Park police staff.
Y esto.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. We'll address that. All right, so at this point, moving on. Oh, look, Terry Muse. She's in. Terry, you got some compliments.
I promised it in jail.
Let's send a letter to Waste Management.
Yes. Terry Muse, Waste Management, Ballon Park Business Association, and resident. I have three things I want to talk about. One is the Waste Management Scholarship and Internship Program. The applications are being accepted now. I'll make sure I get the information over to Parks and Rec. They can put on the website. Every year, we give $2,500 worth of scholarships to Ballon Park students. They don't have to be attending a Ballon Park school, they just need to live in Ballon Park. Then we also have a summer internship, which is a paid internship, which is also $2,500 for an internship. I know you've seen my interns. I call them mine. I take great pride in them. They're just amazing. They go to concerts in the park. They come here and do presentations. They do a lot of recycling outreach and just interacting with the community about all the programs that Waste Management has. So I want to encourage everybody, if you have anybody for the internship, they could be 16, 17, or 18 years old. So if you have anybody interested, let me know, or, like I said, I'll put the application on the website. Also, for the Ballon Park Business Association, February 13th, we have what's called Lunch with the Ballon Park Bunch. It's from 11:30 to 1:30. It's an informal drop-in networking lunch for people to just come and get a chance to network and, you know, catch up on what's going on in their business. It's gonna be the California Seafood Pub. So please come out and support the business, get a chance to try their food, and have a good time at lunch. Everyone has to eat lunch, so why not come with us? And then finally, as a resident, I wanted to thank the Public Works Department for quickly cleaning up graffiti. I don't know what's happening, but the Old Hampshire House, they're tagging it constantly, and then someone comes along and writes profanity on top of it, horrible stuff, and it's huge. But they're on it. They're getting it cleaned up quickly. It's quite embarrassing if someone come over your house, and that's what you see in front of your house, is all this profanity and graffiti. But I don't know if it's something, something's happening, but somehow it keeps showing up there, but thank you for taking it off. We appreciate it.
All right. Thank you very much, Terry Muse. All right, at this point, moving on, we're public communication. One surprise that Marlene Garcia's not gonna say nothing. She used to say a lot of things up here. Okay, oh, she... All right, so at this point, oh, she is. Oh, I was just joking. Okay. I was just joking.
Good evening, mayors and mayor, and members of the City Council. Congratulations to the new elected officials. Marlene Garcia, 4621 Larry Avenue. Just wanted to come and say hello and thank you for really moving our city in the right direction. Our community is really a community that others are looking to and a community that has really, we're finally on the map, and people around our surrounding areas are noticing us. As you know, I work at Kaiser Permanente Ballon Park, and a lot of employees who work there are very pleased with the city improvements. We're very pleased with the bus that comes around and are able to bring us to the downtown area to do some eating at lunchtime. A lot of just great things. As you mentioned, Mayor, I'm a grandmother now, and it's just been a pleasure to raise my children in this community, and I just wanted to say thank you for everything you've done, because I know that the job that you do, trust me, I know, is one that most times is very, it's a sacrifice for all of you, and it's very difficult to do, but you're doing a great job. Let's continue on, and thank you very much.
Let me know when the next 5K is. I'm gonna invite Mike Tuohy. Okay.
Why don't you have a golf cart?
Hey, Christina, I'm a baron.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmember, staff, and residents of Ballon Park. Christina Larios, Ballon Park Library Manager. I just wanted to remind you all again, during the month of February, every Tuesday from 3:00 to 5:00, we have a coding with Scratch workshop for children ages 8 and up. So we still have spots available. We had our first session yesterday. We had 11 kids. So if you know anybody else that's interested, please send them our way. And also, coming up on Saturday, February 16th, we will have a Feng Shui workshop with a certified lady, certified in Feng Shui. She's coming from Manhattan. So it'll be February 16th at 2:00, and you're all invited.
Oh, wow. Jean, write that down.
Thank you, and have a good evening.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Christina. Thank you for the great job you do in our community.
Thank you. My pleasure, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, thank you. At this point, moving along. See no further interest, Javi? Do you want to say something? Okay, no. All right, so at this point, I'd like to now declare the public communication closed. All right, thank you. At this point, we'll go over to the, actually, consent calendar. So we have items 1 through, 1 through 11. Councilmembers wishing to pull any item?
Mayor, I'd like to ask that 9 be held over. We got a little bit ahead of ourselves on the background check. Hopefully, that will be back in, and we'll bring it back at the next meeting.
All right. See no further interest, and I will go ahead and move for, excuse me, to move for all the items. Anyone have any questions? No, all right. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to move consent calendar with exception of number 9. That will be brought back. That's my motion. Second by Councilmember Avila. Any objections? See none, so move. All right, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, we'll go over to the public hearing. Oh, we have a public hearing here.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mayor. Yes, we have a public hearing, and this is for the relocation of one of the cannabis facilities.
Oh, I thought we opened that for the last thing.
For 8, this is 4802 Little John Street, applicant VRD. And City Planner Ron Garcia is here, if you'd like a short presentation or if you have any questions.
Well, at this point, does anyone have any questions? I'm gonna go and open it up, open up. So let me just go ahead and just go up to the, and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone oppose? See no interest, and I'll declare the public hearing closed. Unless someone has questions, I'm gonna go ahead and move for, to pass the actual ordinance, 1437 entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City Ballon Park, California, authorizing the City Ballon Park to enter into a development agreement with VRD, Inc. for the cultivation and/or manufacturing of cannabis at the real property located at 15010 Arrow Highway." So at this point, that is my motion. Hello? Oh, second, second by Councilmember Avila. Any objections? See none, so move. All right. This point, we'll go over to reports of officers, which is approve and adopt Resolution Number 2019-001, entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Ballon Park, Appointing Representatives and Alternate Official Representatives of the City Review. Appoint Members to Establish Committees and Appropriatives." This is for the City Council. Am I correct on this one?
That is correct.
Councilmembers, you want to do that today, or wait till Councilmember Pacheco comes back?
Councilmember Pacheco actually just informed me of the one committee that he did wanted to stay, and besides that, he asked for us to continue to move forward.
All right, so Councilmember said to move forward. Is the only... All right, so, okay, we'll do that. All right, so at this point, let me just, hold on. Item number 12, am I correct?
13.
13. Okay, hold on, real quick. All right, so at this point, there are, just to let, I'm gonna go one by one here. So the first one that I will go through, and then I'll read some of the names that are on there now. We'll go over to the Section 1, which is the City Council and the City Ballpark does here, excuse me. This is for the San Gabriel Valley Water Association quarterly luncheon held on the second Wednesday of the month. Currently, Councilmember Susan Rubio is the actual chair, and I'm the alternate. So anyone else wishing to be on this?
Councilmember Avila, are you interested?
I would, I can take time off for luncheon.
Do you want to be on there, and I could be the alternate?
Thank you, though.
No, thank you.
Second Wednesday of the month. I don't know if I can come into that.
Well...
You can't, because you're on the west side, right? Should we ask Ricardo?
Okay, let's bring that one back. Let's, we're, so, City Clerk, if we could note, please, that we're bringing this one back. Make sure Jean, Ludus, make sure Jean's on there. Okay. All right, so at this point, the next one that we're coming over, we're going to the Los Angeles County Sanitation District, 15 and 22. They meet the fourth Wednesday at 1:30 PM, and I'm currently on there, so it does require the mayor. At this point, who would like to be the alternate?
Mayor, I think I understand that it's Mayor and then Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, all right. All right, so I'll go, okay, so at this point, Vice Mayor Monica Garcia will occupy this, the second seat there. All right, so the next one is the League of California Cities, Los Angeles County, Division 1, Thursday, they meet Thursday at 7:00 PM, Metropolitan Water District and Courtyard at CAP. So at this point, yes. All right. All right, so at this point, did you want to...
I'll do the alternate.
Okay, all right, so at this point, all right, so at this point, we have Councilmember Avila. And the alternate will be Mr. Hernandez. All right, we have that. All right, then we'll go to item number 4, which is the Civil Defense D Directors Meeting, third Thursday. So at this point, the police chief, of course, and then I, unless someone else, I'll go ahead and, Paul, did you want to be on that one?
Uh, no.
Okay, I'll go. All right, so we're gonna leave that one as is.
Enough of that work.
All righty, okay. So we'll go over to number 5. Number 5 is the Civil Defense Area D. So at this point, of course, the police chief, and then we have alternate Mr. Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, so...
We can keep that the same.
We'll leave him on there then. Okay. All right, so then we'll go over to Independent Cities Association, second Thursday of each month, various locations. So at this point...
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Councilmember Paul Hernandez for the representative of ICA. They're usually in the evening, about 7:00.
Did you want to be on there? All right, so the alternate will be Ms. Avila.
Thank you.
All right, so the next one that we'll go over is the Independent Cities Association Lease Finance Authority as needs. So at this point, we have Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, an alternate chief of police.
Mr. Mayor, this is the one that Councilmember Ricardo asked if he could maintain.
Sure, all right. All right, so we'll go ahead and do that. All right, so then, the next one, item 8, which is the City Selection Committee, I'm on there. It does require the mayor, and then the alternate's Vice Mayor Monica Garcia.
So Mayor, is this, it says in conjunction with the League of California Cities meetings. So would it make more sense to have Councilmember Avila?
Do you wish to be on there? Yeah, and they meet, just, no, at 8:30. And they never have a form for...
Oh, at 8:30 in the morning, every time? Because why does it say in conjunction?
8:30 PM. They're trying to change it to 6:00. This is a city selection.
Right.
8:30 PM.
Is it Adam's turn?
They're usually at the Metropolitan and downtown Los Angeles. No? All right, so how about Paul?
That's actually the, that's the...
All right, we'll go ahead and put Mr. Paul Hernandez?
That's where the League of California Cities meets.
That would be twice, right?
I think it's, it's right after...
They're right after each other.
Yeah, it's the same, it's in conjunction with it.
Okay, so at this point, Mr. Hernandez. All righty.
No, 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 no.
No? Did you want, oh, okay, Avila?
Are you sure?
Yeah. Because it's the same time, so...
All righty. Okay, so the next one that we go, Southern California Association of Government, first Thursday of the month at 9:00 AM. Headquarters, so at this point, we have Councilmember Cruz Baca and then Senator Susan Rubio. Anyone wishing to be on here? Don't all rush at one time. Okay.
Let's hold that one back.
All right, we'll hold it, bring it back. All right, so at this point, we'll go over to the Foothill Transit Zone clustered meeting held quarterly, so West Covina. And we currently have Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco and Cruz Baca. Councilmembers? Hello?
For curiosity, what time do they meet?
They meet...
I think they meet at 8:00 in the morning, right?
Mike Tuohy probably, no. Mike Tuohy, what time do they meet? 8:00 AM? Okay.
So...
I could be an alternate if Councilmember Pacheco wants to be removed.
You want to bring that back?
Let's bring that back, just for him.
All right, so at this point, we'll go over to the California Contract Cities Association Board of, the third Wednesday at 6:00 PM. The Councilmember, Vice Mayor Monica Garcia?
Yes, I'd like to remain on the California Contract Cities, CCA.
Then I'll go ahead and be the alternate.
Okay.
All right, so at this point, we'll go over to the Governing Board of the San Gabriel Valley Mosquito and Vector Control Board. So at this point, 6, excuse me, Fridays at 6:00 PM? Is that right? I thought it was in the morning. Is this the Vector Mosquito? I'd like to be on there.
This is, and per state law, we cannot change the assignments until these terms are up.
She needs to continue?
Correct. Unless, unless they resign.
So this is state law?
Yes.
That's incredible.
Could we send, could we send a letter to her, asking her to resign?
Absolutely.
She did contact me stating at that time she wished to remain.
Well, let's send a letter. Let's forward a letter.
Yeah, I only asked if we could send a letter, only as a professional courtesy.
I would have done, yeah, I'm not on there. So, yeah, just please, on behalf of the City Council, we could send a letter. Yes, so we'll bring it back. I'd like to be on there, and, all right, so we'll bring, we'll bring this back. All right, so we'll go to item 13, which is the...
I'd like to do that one.
Want to bring it back? Okay, all right, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I actually'd like to nominate Monica Garcia for that one.
For which one?
For item 13.
Okay, got it. San Gabriel Valley, Council Government? Okay, all right, so... All righty. And Avila. Okay, so then we'll go to the last one, which is the Independent Cities Risk Management Authority, ICRMA. They sound familiar. Okay. Okay, so currently, we have the representative, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, also the chief executive officer, Mr. Yahtzee, and then we have the human resources. You know, I'd like to be on there.
Oh, you want to be there? Okay.
How often do you guys, do you guys meet?
It is sometimes monthly and sometimes quarterly.
Okay, I'll go ahead and...
It is usually on a Thursday in the middle of the day.
Okay, all righty. All right, so at this point, should we go through them, or City Clerk, would you like? Yes, yes, I am. So at this point, I will go ahead and make a motion to pass with the exceptions of the ones that we will be bringing back to the next City Council. I mean, that's my motion.
My second?
Second by Vice Mayor Monica Garcia.